I just had a few people in public call me asking what the purpose of wanting to hire the previous auditor back was, and didn't know if there was some openings in the auditor's office, or somebody is sick, or she needs to fill in for somebody, and just wanted to get some clarity on that situation.
Well, it's by description, a temporary position. Julie, I'm going to ask you to address what our criteria for temporary employment is.
Currently, the process is for any temporary employment, that is up to the department head at their discretion, whether or not they want to hire someone in a temporary interim position. It's my understanding, without stepping in your tone, Sherri, and by all means, please interrupt. It's my understanding that there's an influx of work right now, due to some of the backlog of the elections, so Sherri would like to hire Marlene in a short-term interim basis to help with that process. It should be about a two-week timeframe, is that fair?
Yep.
Very well, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve number five?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Sherri.
Commissioner Aaron?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Takes us at this time to opportunity for public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to discuss anything concerning county businesses, would be the appropriate time. Please come up, give your name and address for the record, please. I'm going to take that opportunity, as no one's getting up, to move on to the commission. Is there anybody on the commission that would like to address anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Veterans Day 2020 coming up tomorrow, and I believe that the courthouse is closed for that, in recognition of the holiday and of the sacrifice of the veterans made. I do want to let you know that Commissioner Schmidt and I have spoken extensively about the moving of the Veterans Memorial in the back of the courthouse. He and I would like to make that a priority, and so we'd like to put that on the agenda for next week, for an appropriation to be made, to assist with some of the private funds that have been secured, in order to help with that. If we're not ready for that yet, we would like to have some discussions with John Rombo about the, how much that's going to cost. But Commissioner Schmidt came to me, we talked about it, we'd like to make it a priority, we'd like to move it to the front of the courthouse, to an appropriate place, and start having those discussions, and start energizing on this again. And so, that's what I have to say about that.
Commissioner Schmidt, I know that's been on your docket for many years, it's bounced back and forth, from moving, to not moving, to moving, to not moving. Anything you'd like to share concerning that?
Yes, to follow up on what Commissioner Aaron said, that is true, I think it's time that we do have some kind of public recognition, at least from our county, that represents our respect and appreciation for our veterans. I know we've talked about this for some time, we've worked with the VFW and the American Legion from Canton, and it seems that we vacillate back and forth, and back and forth, so I think it's time that Lincoln County just takes a look at what we would like to do. I would respect what Canton and their respective organizations have, and I'm perfectly content with leaving that there, but also putting something up front that does recognize us. And Commissioner Aaron's did come forward, and we would like to put that on the agenda for a discussion, so we could maybe find a proper location, and what it may constitute.
Have you had any correspondence, Commissioner Aaron's, Commissioner Gillespie, or Schmidt, from anybody of the Veterans Association from Canton, about moving that recently?
We have had considerable, our veteran service officer has worked with them, and at one time, there was an agreement that they were, and I think Commissioner Gillespie even found out how much it would cost to move the pillars that are in back, but it seems as that, that may have not received full approval from their respective organizations. So we're kind of in a limbo, we go back and we go forth. So I, I think if we take this initial step, we will either find that the VFW, American Legion are willing to join us, or they will just sit with theirs in back, and we will move ahead with something in front. So that's the best answer I can give you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's a new step. Before, it was just supporting what they wanted. You're looking at, either way, making sure to put some type of structure up front, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Commissioner Gillespie, anything?
Yes, I, I support Commissioner Schmidt and Commissioner Aaron's thoughts. The cost of moving it at one time was around $4,800, and of course, that's not everything, that's, there's concrete and some other things involved, flying poles, et cetera. But we think it's in that $12,000 to $15,000 area, and I think, I would have to check with Susan Irons, but I think we had a couple thousand in the account at Farmer State Bank, close to that, anyway.
Very good. Commissioner Landin, anything this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. We're going to skip over our scheduled 9:30, and move on to our discussion with Mr. Rombo concerning grounds and buildings at the four H grounds.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So about a year ago, I was here, we were talking about the engineering proposals in front of us for doing site analysis and everything at the four H grounds, over in Lenox. And at that particular point, we, or you, the commission chose not to move forward with any kind of movement that way. What we've discovered since then is, is that we've kind of missed out on a couple grant opportunities, because we really don't have a plan in place. I mean, we're talking small grants, but we just really, truly need to get moving and get in the site proposal done and everything, so we have a better plan, and we can approach people about money better. So I, at the time, I can't remember what Clark Engineering's was, I figured, I think it was like $35,000, just for the, the scope, the scope of the work was a boundary survey, to define the property lines, to prepare a record of the plat for the property, complete the topographic survey of the entire property, prepare a site plan for proposed improvements desired on the property, and then to prepare the construction plans, just for the dirt work, and how it'll lay out for the roads, and any kind of other things like that, but not actual building, construction plans. And then, and then whether or not we want to move forward and have them do some construction observation on all this. So at that time, I had Clark bid it, and I had, what is it, Burns-McDowell, I think it is, and there was quite a bit of price difference. So I, I basically, since I had been talking to Clark, I went back and just had them go what they would refresh their bid for, and they refreshed it up to the amount of $37,600. So it went up, I think, I don't, somewhere between, just a little under $2,000 in last year. So I would like to move forward, since we do have a working relationship with Clark, to keep them on board to do this. And I would like to get approval to do this, so I could maybe have a survey done yet, this fall, pending on weather, with this new storm coming in. And so that's what I'm looking for, is thirty, the approval to give them the lump fee of $37,600, of which some might come out of this year's budget, but most of it will come out of next year's budget, and it is an approved item. And then, they, they bid approximately $21,000 to do hourly work, but that would be probably spread out over multiple years, so. Either way, I would have that in the budget, because we put that in there.
You've heard the request, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Landin.
Motion and second, any discussion on the request?
I think there's an important economic development component to this, and I think what John said just now about moving this project off the ball, and allowing the four H committee to be able to use this work to do more fundraising. I don't know what their current fundraising sits at right now, I, I don't know if you know off the top of your head or not, John.
I wouldn't want to talk numbers, to be honest, I just don't know that well.
Yeah, I, I think, as we put-
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but they have received, I think they received about $1,800 from a fundraising event, they received $10,000 to put up the animal arena from the Sioux Falls, from the, um-
Farm Credit.
Bring that this morning.
Yeah.
No, not, that could be, and also, they have received, I think, around $7,000 in fundraising thus far. So there are a long way to go, so this will certainly expedite that whole process. Excuse me for interrupting.
No, I mean, I think you're echoing my comments and where I was going with this, Commissioner Schmidt. I think in order to give the, the four H the necessary boost that they need, in order to kick their fundraising efforts into overdrive and get this thing across the finish line, the county is going to have to put this money forward, but hopefully, the four H committee now will also step up and meet us, as they have been attempting to do. So let's get the project done, and get this thing moving forward.
The only question I'll have is that, when this opportunity came for the county, I was very proud of the fact that the county stepped forward at that point, and that this would be an ongoing reassurance to those members of the four H, that we have made a commitment to make that facility top-notch, so. We have a motion and second? Any other questions? We have a motion and second, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Anything else, John?
That's it.
Okay, very good. Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning.
I, I sent you guys an email on this, so hopefully, a little bit of a heads up, but Chief Deputy and I attended a training in Pierre last month, on policy and procedure with the new attacks on law enforcement across the country. The company L M R I writes policy for law enforcement across the country, they have a division called Law Enforcement Risk Management Group. I also discussed this with the chief deputy for the state's attorney's office, and looking at our policy, we shared that with them, they said our policy is so outdated, and quite frankly, poorly put together, that the best avenue would be for a rewrite. With the grants that we've received this year through the federal government for equipment, I would have the money in my budget to do this, so it wouldn't be any extra expenditures, or a new ask for budget, but I'd like to hire them to rewrite our policy manual, which comes in the tune of $18,000. However, $18,000 wouldn't go very far in a lawsuit, so I think it's, it would be a good investment for the county, be a good year for me to do it budgetary. So that's what I'm asking, is to allow me to sign this contract, or allow the chair to sign the contract.
How long do they think that would take, Steve?
He said he'd have it done before the end of the year. They write policy for law enforcement all over the country, and they, they're on retainer with the South Dakota Assurance Alliance, or whatever, whatever all the, most counties in the state are in, in the pool with. This would include two days of training for staff as well, which would be, is badly needed.
Just for the, for those on the telephone, we do get quite a bit of background noise.
I'm, I apologize.
No, I, as long as you're aware of it, it's not affecting or interfering, I just want to make sure you're aware of it. You've heard the request from the sheriff, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Sheriff, thanks for bringing this to our attention, it sounds like it's long overdue, it also sounds like this will help improve safety to law enforcement officers, but to the public as well. And I'm glad that there is a training component to this. I think a lot of times, what the public forgets is that the quality of law enforcement improves with the more training they receive. And I know that the training you put in the, in the briefing form here, is just related to the policy manual, but if there's any other additional training that your department needs, I would encourage you to bring that forward, because I think it really enhances the ability of the department, and maybe this is the impetus to make that happen.
A lot, a lot of that, the training that is free from the state, so we take advantage as much of that as we can.
Very well.
I, I have a question for you, Sheriff. Just for my own edification, once a deputy goes through the training and the academy, is there any requirements to follow up on Commissioner Aaron's idea, where they go back for refresher courses, or how does that whole process work, so you keep your department as current as possible?
There's several trainings that are required, but from the state to be recertified. For instance, domestic violence is every two years, radar is every two years, firearms is every year, so we, we track all training, but there's certain training that's required to remain certified, and so, so at, at the least, that's what we do, to keep everybody current and certified. And then, as time allows, and courses come up, the deputies will then apply for that training, will evaluate it on need and value to the department, and approve it based on that.
Thank you. I mean, I, I think it's, I, again, I think it's good to know, you know, that our sheriff's department, or our public safety, is up to speed, always current, always complying, you know, it's kind of like teachers, I mean, you got to go back every so often, get recertified, take so many credits, you know, so it should be the same for all professions, so thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
You got anything else, Sheriff?
Nope.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Commissioner Gillespie?
Well, I have nothing.
Okay. No, we're voting.
Oh, yes.
We're voting.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you. I believe, Madam Auditor, are you with, or is this coming from Julia?
Nope, this is mine.
Okay.
So, we got the CTCL grant earlier this year for $14,438. I had intended on buying a drop box for ballots, right at this time, I'm unable to secure a location for the drop box, so what I'd like to do is, instead, with the increased problems that the precinct workers had on Election Day, I'd like to increase across the board, their wage by forty-five, forty-five dollars. It'd be a total of 128 workers for 5,760. That would then, between the temporary workers I had in my office, and the election workers increase, that would use up 14,125, 26 of the grant.
You've heard the request, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
So moved, Gillespie.
I have three, I'll take Commissioner Landin, who wants the second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, I don't think there's any other questions. If I am, go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. I think that takes care of everything, until our 9:30 scheduled hearing, until that time, we are at recess. If Commissioner Aaron's is in my, hear my voice, do we have Commissioner Schmidt? Do we have Commissioner Gillespie? We have neither. Either Commissioner, please speak when you are with us. Commissioner Schmidt? I have neither one. Do we have Commissioner Aaron's in the building? Can you hear us? We're trying to get our public hearing started. Is anybody seeing Commissioner Aaron's? Commissioner Schmidt or Commissioner Gillespie, are you with us now? Nope. Commissioner Aaron's, we do not have Commissioner Gillespie or Commissioner Schmidt, so far, but Toby, I think we have them now. Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes, I'm here.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, I'm here.
Very good, time and place for a second reading, for ordinance in Lincoln County, Article Three, Section 3.03, permitted special use, Section 304, conditional use of the 2009 revised zoning ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota. Toby, take it away.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This morning is an amendment for a second reading in a public hearing. This proposed amendment would amend Article Three, which is A1 Agricultural District of the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County. Specifically, there's two parts to this. The first part would be to delete Section H of the-
Toby, could I interrupt you a second? Jake, we're getting a reverb. Commissioner Gillespie, Commissioner, I'm not sure if it's just that door, go ahead, Toby.
So it would delete Section H, which is Class C, castrated animal feeding operation. Again, this is a permitted special use currently, so if those three conditions that are shown on the screen are met, staff administers a building permit, or issues a building permit, the proposed amendment would delete that section, and would add Class C castrated animal feeding operations to a conditional use, which is the same for a Class A and a B. This would allow, then, any Class C wouldn't have any specific permitted special use conditions attached to it, require a conditional use, and go through that process. So again, very simply, this, this amendment would deletes Class C castrated animal feeding operations for a permitted special use, and move it to a conditional use permit. With that, the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing, and did recommend unanimously, seven to zero, to adopt this proposed amendment. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you have for staff.
Anybody on the board at this point? Otherwise, I'll turn at the audience first. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the changes? Official name, please, for the record.
Anthony James Ventura, 47763, 292nd Street, Hudson, South Dakota, 57034. I am in change, I would recommend the Commissioners pass this, it brings these in front of the Board, which is our elected officials, which is where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak concerning favoring the changes? Is there anybody in opposition that would like to speak concerning the changes? Let the record show, there was just one that spoke in favor, and none that spoke in opposition. Turning it to the Board, any questions for Toby, or discussion amongst ourselves?
Mr. Chairman, I think there was vigorous discussion, and good discussion about this in front of planning and zoning, as well as in Toby's office internally. I want to thank a lot of the folks for coming in and being a part of that process. I think it's kind of recognition, this proposal is recognition of the fact that folks want to have a say in what goes on around them, as opposed to a Class C just administratively being approved. I don't think we'll see a lot of problems with Class C applications, but this simply streamlines the operate, the permit process, but what it also does, is it puts the decisions in the hands of elected officials, who can be held accountable, and then the public can say, okay, it wasn't just some appointed or handpicked Board. It puts the responsibility where it belongs, on the people who are, the officials who are elected by the people, and so, I think it just seems, seems fairly straightforward in terms of what it will accomplish, and creates more accountability and transparency in the process.
Commissioner Gillespie, Commissioner Schmidt?
I, I think, oh, go ahead, Jim.
Well, I just want to say that I, I would agree with Commissioner Aaron's, it, it adds transparency, it belongs with the commission to make the final decision, but it also helps, I think, in, in planning on the part of individuals that wish to get into animal raising, to know the requirements, and to know the procedures, and quit this jockeying around that we've had for so long.
Commissioner Gillespie?
And I echo those comments from Commissioner Aaron's and Commissioner Schmidt, Mr. Chairman, so with that, I will make a motion, unless, well, I'll wait to hear from Commissioner Landin.
Commissioner Landin?
I was part of those discussions, and I agree with everything that I was said.
The only comment I have is a question, Class D requirements? For the record, Toby, if you'd reiterate what those remain.
So a Class D is still part of the permitted special use process?
And was that part of the discussion, of bringing that into the same classification as it used to be for a conditional use permit, and they chose not to add that?
Well, to keep it separate, there are two separate sections, so that will be something that will be brought forward by the Planning Commission for discussion.
That is on your topic right now?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Gillespie, I think you were willing to offer a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we motion, motion for this, and we'll move forward with this change.
Second.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Schmidt, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Aaron, sorry about that one, giving them a chance, because they have delayed time. We have a motion and second to approve the changes. If there's no further questions or comments, I'll ask for a Madam Auditor, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, and for everyone's record, this will take effect when, Toby or Madam Auditor? Has to do with the publication, but-
Twenty days from next Friday.
Just a question here, I saw in the briefing form that it said requested action first reading. Is this the first reading, or are we, okay, so that's just a, probably what was written in there was just a carryover from last time? Okay.
Being no further business for the county, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Being no further business for the county, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Gillespie?
All right. Well, I have three options there. I'll take Commissioner Gillespie. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Landin for the second. A Madam Auditor, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.